Okay, it'd be 9:30. Rabbi, would you come forward and lead us in the invocation, please? All stand.
Good morning to the City Council and to the community here in Vero Beach. There's an interesting concept in Jewish life that involves lots of construction. And I know you have lots of requests or all kinds of building permits, and it's fun to tease you just a little bit and wonder what I'm really going to be asking for. It's called an eruv, and what it is, is in Judaism, you're not supposed to work on the Sabbath, you're not supposed to work on Shabbat, and you're not even supposed to carry objects outside of your house, outside of your domicile. Well, in order to make sure that people don't stay in their homes, but actually can go and visit with their neighbors and have meals with their neighbors, you build something called an eruv, which is a boundary, and as long as you're in the eruv, your domicile is considered connected to the next domicile. So if I have a neighbor that's next to me and our two fences go around our property, then we're considered in the same domicile, and therefore I can carry food over to their house and we can enjoy the Sabbath together. It's a really pretty amazing thing. In larger communities, they actually go out and they build a power line or some type of line that runs around the whole community, the wider community, so that all of the Jewish community, Jewish population in that area is considered inside of that eruv. I am not asking you to build an eruv around Vero Beach. It'd be nice, but I'm not asking for that. But I want you to think about that same concept, that same concept of what is boundaryed and what connects us and binds us together so that we are one community. And I've talked about it a number of times in my own congregation, but I think it also applies to all of us. Then maybe we don't go out and build a physical eruv, some type of physical border, but instead we use certain values. And in Judaism, we talk about building things out of words and building things out of values. What are the values that we use to mark the space of our community? That we set out to be those pillars, those ways that we guide and strengthen and create focus and direction in our community? Values that I often talk about as I talk about these eruv are chaim and chesed and rahamim, of grace and kindness and compassion, of kabod, of really honoring someone, or kadosha, finding that which is sacred and holy, or ultimately shalom, wholeness, completeness, and a peace. And so as I come before you, that's one of those questions of what are those values and how do we stake them out quite literally in our community so people can see that we're using them, so people can see that we share these values in common, that we share and bring these values in the ways that we treat each other when all that we do. And that brings me to my prayer, my invocation for the City Council, for our whole community. The purpose of all prayer, of all of our actions, all of our study, is to uplift our words, to return them to the source, their source above. The world was created by a downward flow of letters. Our task is to form these letters into words and take them back to God, take them back to unity, take them back to which is eternal. If you come to know this dual process, your prayer, your action, may be joined into the constant flow of creation, word to word, act to act, voice to voice, breath to breath, and thought to thought. Our words fly upwards and come before God. As God turns to look at this ascending word, life flows through all of the worlds, and prayer on our actions receive their answer. All this happens in an instant, and all this happens continually. Time has no meaning in this cycle. The divine spring, that energy that fills us and brings goodness into our world, we have to, with our actions, with our words, with these values that we bring into this world, we make ourselves into a channel to receive that energy from above and return it and keep the cycle flowing. Amen.
Please join me in a pledge allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll call the Tuesday, February 4th, 2014 City Regular City Council Meeting to Order. Mrs. Bach, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fletcher?
He's here.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Present.
Mayor Winger?
Here, present.
Are there any agenda additions, deletions that we need to consider?
None.
All right, we'll move forward with the agenda as it is.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that brings us to proclamations. Mrs. Turner?
Thank you. My pleasure today to read this proclamation. Vero's Thunder on the Beach Powwow was first started 20 years ago by the City of Vero Beach's Recreation Department. It is now the largest powwow in Florida. And Donna Chesser, head of the charity, has been their true driving force for over 12 years and an active member of the community since 1985. The purpose of this event is to teach children and families about Native Americans, their history, customs, beliefs, and their way of life. The event is held at the Indian River Fairgrounds, and the arena is where the powwow dance circle takes place, with over 35 of the finest Native American artists and crafters in the country. At past events, the powwows attracted over 10,000 guests, and this year, they look forward to reaching their goal of over 15,000 visitors. There will be over 12 different types of educators and entertainers, such as Buffalo Bell, Lash &amp; Steel, Chee Chee White Cloud, Storytelling Circle, and teepees, just to name a few. Saturday night, there is a trade blanket event around the campfire, where the public can learn how the natives traded for centuries. The event seems to transcend in time, especially during the night events, when the colors truly come alive. Now, therefore, the City Council of Vero Beach do hereby proclaim February 14th through February 16th as Native American Weekend, and invite everyone, young and old, to participate in this great event.
I'm Jody Swiss. I have the pleasure of being the president of Thunder on the Beach Powwow. And I'd like to thank you all for the proclamation and for the support. This year is, and so many other years, it's really an honor to be able to bring to the community what we have. And it's with incredible work from so many people who only even come here just for the event. We could never afford to hire the entertainment, really, that comes. These people come to support what we're doing, which is teaching children and families what is no longer taught. We'd like to thank the City Council, thank Vero Beach, all the community. With your support, we hope to hit our goal again this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you for seeing there. A special, special night out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Graves?
Is Mr. Sam Richardson here?
Let's send it to him.
Okay. Whereas one in every 2,500 pregnancies are diagnosed with a congenital diaphragmatic hernia, CDH, and since 2000, it is estimated that over 500,000 babies have been born with CDH. However, only 50% of those babies survived. And CDH is as common as spina bifida and cystic fibrosis. However, very few people know about it or are aware of it. And 1,600 babies are born with CDH every year in the United States. And there are many people living in Vero Beach, Florida, who have been diagnosed with and have survived their CDH, although many families in Vero Beach have endured the horrible pain and grief associated with the loss of a loved one with CDH. And those with CDH often endure multiple surgeries and possible medical complications beyond their diagnosis that include heart defects, pulmonary complications, gastric and intestinal problems, developmental delays, and may require respiratory and medical support for years. And raising awareness of this congenital defect will help bring about acceptance and support for those suffering with it, and will help advocate for urgently needed medical research and advances. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, does hereby proclaim April 19th, 2014, as a day of congenital diaphragmatic hernia awareness. And we will send it to Mr. Richardson.
Thank you very much. We'll move into public comment, and the first comment we have is Mr. Frank Manonino, I believe I have that right, of Children's Cancer Research Group. Are you here?
Actually, Frank is traveling, so he's left on his co-chair, Missy Elmore.
Well, we're pleased to have you. Come forward, please.
Thank you. This is Jessica Schelma, and I will let you know how she fills in, yes. I've got a slideshow to just kind of go on while I'm speaking about the event last year, to kind of give you an idea. You'll see some of your faces. That's Frank. He didn't end up like that at the end, I just want you to know.
Yes.
We did finally take the rest of the hair off of him. Just real quick about St. Baldur's Foundation. It's a volunteer-driven charity committed to funding the most promising research to find cures for childhood cancers. Basically started in the year 2000. Few friends, actually, one of them, or two of the founders, live here in Vero Beach, did a little competition in a local Irish bar and said, "Let's see what we can do to give back." And I don't know if you know the statistics, but only 4% of what the government allot for cancer research goes towards pediatric cancer. That's only 4%. So they created the St. Baldur's Foundation to fill the gap. So we are basically strictly for pediatric cancer research. The statistics are crazy. Over 175,000 children will be diagnosed with cancer this year. Every three minutes, a child is diagnosed. One in five will lose their battle. We want to change that. We want to totally change those statistics and put them in the kids' favors. Jessica is the aunt of our angel that we lost last year, Quentin. We proclaimed March St. Baldur's Foundation Cancer Children's Awareness Month by the County Commission last year in Quentin's name. He's one of our honored children. Anyway, what we're doing this year, last year, in March 2nd, we did an event. We shaved heads for Children's Cancer Research. Our goal was to shave 75 heads and raise $50,000. In a matter of seven weeks, we raised over $105,000 and shaved 150 heads at Captain Hiram's in Sebastian. This is our second year. This year, I want $200,000 and over 150 heads. We have our whole Board of County Commissioners shaving again this year. You'll see pictures of them up there. That's Vincent. He's also, oh, there's Mr. Baird. He's also one of our local children who actually just got cleared as cancer-free. Oh, look who that is. We had a lot of fun with it last year. We also have the Sebastian City Council up to shave their heads. Mayor McPartlin, Councilman Hill, Andrea Coy has also put her head back on the block again this year. So what we're looking from you is we would like some support. I would love to have you up in the hot seat and shave your heads for anyone who wants to. You can raise money. We just want the awareness brought in. You know, we have a short period of time between Christmas and now to really get the word out there where people are focused. The event happens on March 1st at Captain Hiram's at noon. So I would love to give you all my cards if you have any questions. If anyone would like to commit right now to shaving their heads, Mayor Winger, for Children's Cancer Research, I promise you, it all comes back. It won't come back any differently.
But you told me.
That is genetic alopecia areola, just in case you're wondering. We did not shave his head last year. I know you all know Marcia Littlejohn. We shaved her head on air last year. Marcia actually, in the middle of our council meeting, decided she would shave her head, and she raised a ton of money. So, Mr. Kramer, you also have a nice head of hair.
I'm halfway there already.
So, see? So it won't hurt you. I would love to have commitments from you now. Frank and I would be more than happy to help you, and you're going to raise money. You're going to raise money for the kids, for local kids, for kids around the nation that are actually fighting cancer. It's a great cause. Only 2% of what we bring in goes to management, so we are completely volunteer-driven. Frank and I and everyone involved, we don't get paid. We spend the next, we spend three months out of the year just hammering away for this cause. So, who's in? Mr. Fletcher? I'm putting you in the hot seat now.
I noticed.
So if not, think about it. I'll give you all my cards and we'll get you signed up. But we need to get rolling. We've got four weeks till the big shave event. So I'll make sure Rita gets the, I've got some press releases, I'll make sure she gets those, and I can give you my cards now, or I can set them up front. You want me to pass out the cards now? As a matter of fact, I'll let Jessica do it. Do you have any questions? No?
It's an incredible event.
It's awesome. Listen, if you're not having your head shaved, you can donate. You can go to the website and you can donate. Every little bit helps. You can also come out to the event. It's an amazing event. It really, really is amazing. We had the pink fire truck last year. We had bagpipes. We've got all kinds of great stuff going on again this year, and everyone that comes out, we've got a DJ, music. It's all volunteers. We are all volunteers. So it's a great family-oriented event for those that have children. And we shave men, women, and children. Thank you very much for your time this morning. Frank will shave. This is his 10th year. He's the knight of the ball table, so. Well, Mayor, I know you're thinking about it. I see it.
I have a wife, and I'm not quite sure I'd be welcome home.
I think your wife would say, "You know what? What better reason?"
I'll give you your telephone number.
Okay, that sounds great. My husband shaves every year. I tell him, like, "If you tell me no," I'm going to be upset with you.
When you have a younger wife, you don't want to take too many risks.
No, no, but you know, some guys make great do-rags. We also, I mentioned Board of County Commissioners, Sebastian City Council. I'm going to Felsmer City Council on Thursday night. I hear we already have a couple of commitments there, which I'm going to make sure I confirm. John O'Connor of the Benevolence Firefighters, they're completely on board. Chief King is shaving. I think he knows. I'm hoping he knows. So we've got a great, great organization this year compared to last year, so it's just getting the word out. So if you could please do that, that would be amazing.
We'll be out to support you, Mrs.
Awesome. Great, thank you.
And we'll put the pressure on here.
Thank you very much. The great presentation. Rebecca Ricky, would you come forward? You have another great presentation.
Good morning. Rebecca Ricky, the Executive Director of Vero Heritage, Inc., the Heritage Center, and the Indian River Citrus Museum. I'm not going to ask you to shave anything at this point. Just wanted to make you all aware of an event that we're having March 13th. It's called "A Heritage Celebration If These Walls Could Talk." And you'll see in front of you the flyer. What we're going to do that night is a local history presentation. This will be the fourth time that we've done it. Last year, as you may recall, we had the timeline that you got to walk through the history of Vero Beach. This year, we're doing architecture. We're focusing on buildings. And you're going to be able to take a walking tour through some of the buildings that make Indian River County, Indian River County. The ones that we picked for this are buildings that are still standing, but we will have that night, the Wall of Fame, the buildings that are still with us. And of course, leading the parade, of course, is that lovely building in Pocahontas Park known as the Heritage Center. We'll also have the Wall of Shame, and that will be the buildings that we've lost through either neglect or through demolition. This is a fundraiser for us. We like to put the fun into fundraising, and we hope you have a good time that night. The admission is $10 per person. It runs from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. At each table with the exhibit, you'll be able to pick up a sheet, or in some cases, sheets, giving you information about each one of the buildings. And at the end of the walkthrough, you can actually put it together and have kind of a little booklet, much like you did last year. And instead of just general history, this time, you're going to end up with the history of the buildings. And you can see in front of you the ones that we've selected. For Vero Beach, we're doing the Florida Theater and the Farmer's Bank. The nice thing about that night is we have asked people who have a connection to those buildings to be there with us, and you'll be able to talk to them. Jack Chestnut and Bob Brackett will be there for the theater. That just comes to mind. We've asked some of the graduates from Gifford High School. In fact, one of them works for us at the Heritage Center, and Ernie's twisting the arm of some of his friends to get them to be there. So you'll have somebody to talk to. There'll be some stories. You can ask questions. It won't just be looking at a picture of a building. So I think that'll make it a lot of fun. And we invite all of you to attend. I've given you the flyer. Feel free to make copies and pass out whenever you'd like. And if I could, I'd also like to just take one moment, very quickly, to thank the City of Vero Beach, and particularly the staff, for all that they do for us at the Heritage Center, particularly Public Works, who we see a lot of because we're in the park, Don and Annette and Chris and Rock all get tired of seeing me, I'm sure, the folks at Solid Waste, Lonnie and his crew, Rob Slezak in Recreation Department, the Planning Department. Sherry never fails to answer me when I ask her some bizarre question. Peggy Lyon in the Attorney's Office, and Tammy, and Joyce, and Jim, and Rita. Thank you all very much for always being there for us and answering our questions. And particularly, we'd like to give a big shout-out to our Police Department, who keep us safe and who walk through the park for us and keep the playground and the tennis courts safe, and we truly, truly appreciate that. So thank you.
Rebecca, thank you so much for being there for us. I firmly believe that a community that doesn't honor its heritage and its past has no future, and thank you for being there for us. We appreciate it.
All right. Thanks very much.
And Ms. Turner, please.
I just wanted to thank you and the heritage. If anybody has not been out there to one of these events, it is terrific. It is a great eye-opening experience on our history of Indian River. So please mark your calendars for Thursday, March 13th. Hope to see you all out there.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you again. Mr. Brian Hay would like to talk to us about trains, electric, and public comment. Please come forward, Mr. Hay.
Well, council members, do they also shave faces?
It could be arranged.
Part of the package.
Other council members have probably heard this, but Amelia, I'll tell you, about 40 years ago, I emerged from the bathroom one Saturday morning clean-shaven, and my wife looked at me. She hadn't met me when I had a beard, never saw me without a beard, and the first thing out of her mouth was, "If I knew you looked like that, I would have never married you." The beard came back. She hasn't thrown me out yet, so I don't think I'm going to join the shave thing. I think it's dangerous. So I can appreciate the mayor's comment that he has a wife that he might want to check with first. Anyway, I asked to speak on trains. Polar, your ears have probably been ringing because I've been talking about you. One of the things that I love about Polar Turner is, you know, you want some financial analysis. You don't do things blindly. You ask for financial analysis, and I think that that addition to the council since you've been on has been a real benefit to the community. I think the community owes you a debt of gratitude for making sure that financial analysis is taken into consideration. With the trains, what happened, Polar? You fell asleep? What happened? Because you have agreed to do something with the trains. No, yeah, you have. You've agreed to join, the council has agreed to join other communities in seeking tax dollars. And you've done this without any financial analysis. As a member of the commission, I've asked at every meeting so far, they're representative, and he, in short, says, "None of your business." And we've asked for, and last night's meeting, same thing, and his answer is that they're a private corporation, that they have absolutely no need to disclose any financial information to us, and they have no intention of disclosing any financial information to us. Well, this whole idea with this bullet train from Miami to Orlando is a $2 billion project? And when you take communities up and down from Miami to Orlando, and you join together and you go to the state and you say, "Hey, you know, we need some, we need some help in quiet zones or fencing," or whatever it is, to support the train, you're basically asking for tax dollars. And just because it comes from the state doesn't mean it's not coming from us. State doesn't give anybody anything they don't take from us first. And we're doing this without any financial analysis. We have no idea whether this company really has any ability to actually perform what they say they're going to do. And I just think it's an absolute gaping hole, and I think that the city would be served, well-served, by a reconsideration of whether we really want to get involved adding our name, which essentially adds credibility to an organization that absolutely totally refuses to turn over one iota of financial analysis as to what they're doing, whether they have enough money to do it, what's going on. And anyway, I think that, I think that the citizens of this community and the grants from the state, I think that they would be well-served if the communities up and down would rethink that request. And speaking of rethinking things, too, there's probably some members that'd like to rethink whether they really want to appoint me on this commission. And I know that there's been some questions about the vote and the ballots, and I've done some research on that, and at the time that you all cast your vote, Mr. Roberts' name was on the ballot. He garnered enough votes. That has since been changed. He is not a member of the commission, but that's not what this council voted on. The city manager has said in a memo that basically it doesn't make any difference what you did, because the ordinances require certain things, and he doesn't meet residents' requirements, so therefore, the fact that you voted him on doesn't count. And I just don't think staff should be making a determination as to whether or not something the council did doesn't count for whatever the reason. If the council did something wrong, then bring it back to the council, explain what they did wrong, and have a revote. Anyway, you've gone forward with a resolution that, to best of my knowledge, has been sent out to whatever authority, whoever gets such notification of an endorsement and a resolution to request state funding. I think what we've done is we've been led down a path, and we've kind of blindly followed down this path, when there was another road that we should have taken. And the other road that we should take is participate and request a voice in the environmental impact study that's going on. If you want, if you see the need to spend millions of dollars, a couple hundred million dollars on the entire line, $3 million in the city, $15, $20 million in the county on just one question, on a noise, then the citizens would be better served, the taxpayers would be better served. If we joined in an environmental impact study, if we asked for a voice at that table and raised issues in the environmental impact study as to the impact on, we just heard about historic buildings, what's the impact on historic buildings? And what's the environmental impact? And what's the environmental impact of the noise and the blocking of the traffic and the safety and all of the historic buildings that are along the track? And if we were to have a voice at that table in Tallahassee, and that's where we ought to join with the other communities, and have a voice at that table at the environmental impact point, and we could then perhaps convince the governing authorities that the train needs to be responsible. They're going to have an environmental impact on historic buildings, if they're going to have an environmental impact on the quality of life with the noise, if they're going If they're gonna have an environmental impact on, on whether or not we can get across. You know, my, my wife asks, she says, "Well, what happened? What happens in a hurricane if all of the gates went down? And they've got these gates now you can't cross, and all the gates went down, and the power went out? We're stuck? We live on the ocean side. We're stuck? What do we do?" And, and I think it's a, it's a good point. And these are points that could be brought up in an environmental impact study. And rather than the city taxpayers having to dig into their pockets, maybe the railroad would have to do something. So I, I think that, you know, you need to, you need to reconsider where you're going, and you need to, uh, you need to have some, uh, some financial. And, uh, I'm, I'm just a member of the, uh, of an advisory commission. I have no real authority to tell the representative that he needs to cloth up financial information. But I think this council is in a different position, certainly a higher authority. And, uh, maybe you can tell them that, uh, they need to, they need to produce. Anyway, my pitch on the, uh, on the trains and, uh, my request that you reconsider what you're doing to the taxpayers here in, uh, in this city, in this county, and up and down the line by joining, uh, by joining the parade to, uh, to give this, this whole concept credibility. The second thing that I asked to speak about was the electric. Rabbi left. He talked about things that bind us together and, you know, putting, putting ropes around, wires and fences around things. Anyway, we kind of have that area here in the city. And, uh, in the, uh, Vero Beach Electric Utility. And we're surrounded by, uh, by FPL. That comes as no surprise to anybody. We have three service areas. We have the city, we have Indian River shores, and we have, uh, Indian River County. They're joined together in, uh, in the Vero Beach Electric Service Territory. We also have a public service complaint that's been on hold that if it went forward, and the city has the ability to do this, if the, public service complaint, if we were to join that, rather than join a group asking for tax dollars for the train, if we were to join with the complainants and say, "Let's bring this before the Public Service Commission. And Indian River shores wants out of the Vero Beach Electric Utility. So does Indian River County." And if we were to agree to that, a decision by the Public Service Commission, which if all parties were in agreement, it would be a done deal, and it's easy, easy to do, that would bifurcate the territory. And the Indian River shores would then have their own territory. Indian River County would have theirs. It doesn't come for free. They don't just get their territory. There's power lines, there's equipment, there's value there. And we know what that value is. It's already been established by our deal with, uh, FPL. And, uh, they could own their own territory and buy electric from whoever they wanted to. And that doesn't violate any of the entitlements or any of the, uh, agreements that we have with OUC or FMPA. The city would still be in the electric utility, and it's not a partial sale. It's not a partial sale. This is, this is, we're going forward with the wholesale, and we're doing it incrementally. We could receive the value from Indian River shores and the value from Indian River County. We could receive that value. And, uh, the, uh, FPNL could decide whether or not they want to be part of this, and they wanna own that Indian River shore territory or Indian River County territory, or they want those political subdivisions to own their own territory. But it gets, it, it resolves the issue with the county. It resolves the issue with the shores. They won't be beaten on us anymore. And, uh, we would have a ton of money. If we just took the eleven percent that, uh, in, in cash that the shores has or the, uh, percentage that the, that the county has, if we took that, just the, the cash value and put that in the, in the city coffers, we'd be, uh, in, in pretty good shape. Nobody gets anything for free. The city winds up with, uh, with some cash in their, in their pockets. The, uh, utility, uh, contracts aren't broken at all. And, um, anyway, it, uh, it makes sense, and it doesn't cost the, uh, the city more silly money on, um, attorneys and consultants and lobbyists and other ridiculous things. Last but not least, the, uh, public comment. It's interesting, uh, for over twenty years, it's, thought I saw, yeah, I do see Mr. Gafanti out there. He'll, I know, will remember, Mr. Zork, um, was quite a controversial figure for a while, and it resolved, revolved, a lot of it revolved around public comment. And they moved public comment from the beginning of the meeting to the end of the meeting to try to do away with it. The whole controversy for years went on. And the interesting thing about public comment is that the only time that it's a problem is that when we have a, a mayor who just don't wanna hear it. "Well, Mr. Kramer, you served as mayor? I don't remember you ever having a problem with public comment." "Pilar, you served as mayor? I don't remember one incident, not one, where you had any problem with public comment." Current mayor, who's been in for three months, and he's got major problems with public comment because he doesn't wanna hear what people have to say. His answer, most recently, was just to turn off the microphone so that the public couldn't hear what was being said. And I think that public comment isn't the problem. Rude and intolerant mayors are the problem. If public comment takes up too long a portion, if there's too many hours being spent on public comment, I can tell you how to resolve that issue. And it's really easy. If you don't want as much public comment, stop doing things the citizens don't want. The only time you see a lineup here at the public podium is when you're trying to do something that the public doesn't want. And it usually doesn't come as a secret. It doesn't come as a surprise that something's going on that the public is gonna be outraged about. Now, you wanna resolve public comment complaints that the mayor apparently has? Stop putting things out there that the public doesn't want you to do.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Gafanti.
No, I was Mr. Hedy.
Hedy.
Oh, no, I, for him to come forward. I'm sorry.
I'm the, Mr. Gafanti, uh, I'm the one with the beard.
Thank you, sir.
Morning. My name is Joseph Gafanti, and I pay taxes to the city of Vero Beach. Brian is wrong about Frank Zork. He, Frank Zork was not a controversial person. He was a warm, he is a warm, wonderful human being. And as far as I know, he always has been. And what happened to him when the city violated his civil rights, if that made him controversial, I don't, uh, I can't agree with that. I came here this morning to talk on two things, and I'll get to the point. What's before you is this railroad business. And before I, before I get started, I'm not opposed to the train running through town here. I'll give you some info. This is a, a matter of money. Three million dollars is the number that was thrown out, that it would cost the city extra to make a quiet zone in the, through the, so the trains wouldn't blow the whistle going through the city of Vero Beach. Uh, that's, it's not a really question of money. It's a question of life and death. The, uh, and let me explain that as I, as I go on. Between two thousand and six and two thousand and twelve, there were two hundred and sixty deaths. People killed, uh, trespassers, according to the, uh, report. Trespassers in the state of Florida. That's six years, I didn't need my slide rule for that. Six years, two hundred and sixty people killed. These are pedestrians. They're not vehicle accidents. I don't know how many of them took place. I understand from the city clerk's office that Chief Carey, uh, made a comment about the, uh, two hu- two thousand and ten incidents in the city of Vero Beach with the railroad. And before anybody goes off thinking otherwise, I have all the respect in the world for Chief Carey, and has no attack or any inference that, or malfeasance on his part. I appreciate what he did. Unfortunately, it wasn't enough as far as I was concerned. And that's no criticism of him. He's the only chief of police that I've had any respect for since Sam McCall, who was here many, many years ago. So, I can give you more of the numbers, but like, uh, the, half of them were either lying, sleeping, or, or standing on the tracks. And they attribute this to some kind of a suicidal movement that apparently it's taking place, I looked in New Jersey too, because I travel there. I know they have an extensive commuter train system. And I looked there, and they also said that people were choosing to commit suicide in front of a, uh, diesel locomotive. I got these numbers, there's two hundred and sixty numbers from a News Channel Five website, which I read, which was, was about, uh, Monday. Uh, yesterday, or, excuse me, Tuesday, yeah, Monday. Of this, of this, just yesterday. It appeared. How coincidental, how convenient for me. So, we have a big problem as far as the, uh, this business about quiet. The, I don't know how many of these people tried to commit suicide. I don't know how many people were thrown on the track to eliminate, rid the, uh, rid the population of indigents. I don't know if that's the case, but it, it's not beyond the realm of possibilities. The, uh, the bottom line is that these people need to be protected if they aren't, not much that the, uh, train, because of, um, Newton's, uh, moment, uh, excuse me, momentum time, well, excuse me, mass times velocity. The momentum of a train can't be stopped, can't slam on the brakes and avoid hitting somebody who's standing or intentionally lying on the tracks. There's nothing, the engineer, and it's traumatic for them, but there's nothing they can do about it. I think you got the point that part, so far. The, we need the whistles to alert people that there's a train coming. If you look up the tracks traditionally and see a light far away, you have no idea how long that's gonna take to get to you. And if a woman with a baby carriage is trying to get across the tracks or, you know, you can imagine all kinds of things. It's, and these accidents, uh, that reported the two hundred and sixty, they don't say whether they took place in the day or night. Mostly, they were passenger trains going fifty miles an hour. This train is supposed to go over a hundred miles an hour. So you, I, I addressed the commission yesterday and the railroad commission. And, uh, I think they understood my concerns. It's a matter of life and death. The public will absorb, I think, the, um, the city manager yesterday said, yesterday said that you're, uh, four years behind in the road repairs. That might be, I, I, you know, he, that's what, I don't know what road repairs are necessary. But we don't have the money to do this. I think it's incumbent upon you people to check into the, what's going on with this company. The finances at which, uh, Mr. Hedy addressed. Says we ought to know what these people are about. And it's a private, both apparently the FEC, I thought it was a public, uh, company, but it was taken private years ago. So I'd like to know what their, what their finances are and if they're gonna go through with this project. This was all covered before, yes, uh, yesterday, before the, uh, railroad commission. And the, uh, one of your members, Jay Kramer, was there and witnessed the whole thing. Now, maybe some of you watched it on TV. So before you decide or think about going, keeping, uh, the trains quiet, you ought to consider the consequences. And I think you're gonna find out that, I didn't even mention the cars trying to cross over. And here's the thing that really, really is disturbing. Their fix that's gonna cost us three million dollars is to put two sets of gates on the, on the tracks. Uh, where I come from, back in the, I'm sorry to take so much time, but where I come from, back in the forties, when I was a little kid, used to go down to the railroad tracks and hang around with the engineers. And the guy used to come out there, an old guy, he's probably forty years old. He used to come out there and crank these gates down. A little bell ring in his thing that a train was coming. And the gates would come down like this, on both sides of the track. Now, I was just informed that they're, they don't have gates like that in Vero Beach or maybe anyplace else in Florida. They have a gate coming down here on this side, and a gate that side, and you can go around if you want to. I'm not gonna tell you about the ticket I got in Vero Beach one time, but you can go around one, you can go around, round it like that. So their safety feature for three million dollars is to put another, complete the, the pair. And I think that's absurd. That's not gonna do anything, especially for the pedestrians. I, I would like to go on, but I think I said I'd take five minutes. I'm sure it's ten. There's a lot of other issues that I'd like to bring forth, but, uh, now, the, the thing is that I, I read this agenda, and it said, "I'm gonna talk on mayor's matters." That's not what I wrote. I think I wrote on my form, "Mayor's behavior." And if you're gonna change, if somebody in the city is gonna change the agenda on me, then I can change the agenda on them. If that's the way we, we wanna play. So I'm gonna talk about the mayor's, uh, behavior. The, uh, I wasn't here at the meeting. And from what I understand, the mayor clicked off a resident's, uh, microphone. And I found that, I've been coming to these meetings for twenty-five years, and I think I've seen that before. And it's really a juvenile act. If that's the best that you can do to stymie the public from coming forth and offering opinion, then maybe, maybe you ought to, uh, better serve the community, if not yourself, by growing roses and go someplace else. It's terrible. And that's a reflection on the other four of you for not criticizing and, and straightening him out. Maybe you should give his compass needle, needle a spin and get him headed in the right direction. His needle seems to be stuck on south. Good day.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. Now, we will have general public comment. Mr. Fish, would you come forward? Identify yourself, please.
I already did.
Well, I know, but the rules are you have to give your address and all that.
Bill Fish, Vero, uh, twenty-two thirty-six Breena Vista Boulevard in the city. Uh, got a couple of things to mention here. My agenda seems to be growing as things going on, but people have already talked about, um, this piece that's in the paper. Didn't mention the contracts that we have. It'd be nice to see, we have, because we had a meeting in the Richardson Center between Town of Indian River Shores, City of Vero Beach, and the county talking about all the layers of contracts between those three entities. Fortunately, I don't think the Town of Indian, well, maybe they do. County and Town of Indian River Shores have contracts. Maybe they do. But in any event, uh, there was not mentioned in today's paper, and that's really the issue I wanted to bring up, that this is a lot more complicated than going up to the legislature, spending our tax dollars, I'm surprised Mr. Hedy didn't mention that, seventy-nine, seventy-eight thousand dollars to go talk to our legislators as to how to write a law that'll override exist- go talk to our legislators as to how to write a law that'll override existing contract? I, I think that's what I'm reading here. That's incredible. One sort of a bad thing that happened Sunday, somebody stopped me, and they said, "Whoa, someone told them that the Star Spangled Banner was sung in a foreign language." And I said, "What?" It most assuredly was not. What was sung in another language was "America the Beautiful." It was an ad. And it was sung in all the native languages. There were Native Americans that did that. And it was just, so if somebody doesn't know the difference between "America the Beautiful" and, and the Star Spangled Banner, too bad. I did want to bring up something that is not a pleasant subject, and it does point fingers at certain people, but I'm not going to mention any names. When I, the last time I was here, I asked you not to set up the commissions as appointees. Some of you seem adamant in doing that. So, I brought my dictionary here so I could read exactly the definition of a stooge. First one, an entertainer feeds lines to the main comedian. Bingo. Second one, an underling, assistant, or accomplice. That sounds like what's going on here, if somebody is so adamant that they've got to have a, an appointee, that is a stooge. That's what's going on. And I have asked our, Mr. Kement, is this covered by the sunshine law? And it is not covered by the sunshine law. So, you appoint somebody, you can meet with that person in any place that you choose to meet with that person, and I don't know what your, because your agenda is totally hidden, you're outside of the sunshine law. Is that true, Mr. Kement? They're not covered by the sunshine, the meeting between the council person, the appointer and the appointee, not covered by sunshine?
Right, that'd be correct.
Talk about backdoor politics. Thank you.
Who would like to come forward, please? In the back there.
It's a question, will there be an opportunity?
Come, come up to the mic. Sorry to make you do it, but.
My name is Ralph Goldman. This is the first time I've attended one of these meetings, and I wanted to know if there'd be an opportunity to speak about the, what's been referred to as the leash-type law before you vote on it.
Yes, most definitely. And we'll look forward to your comment. Mr. Dag, would you come forward, please?
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, council members. Ken Dag, 1846 21st Avenue, Vero Beach. Wanted to, first of all, thank you very much for your support on the resolution that came from the High Speed Rail Commission to, in the future, may, to help with maybe some funds. For folks out there, and I know you all know this already, the railroad, mainly, they are regulated by the federal rules, federal government. They, as I'm finding out, pretty much can do what they would like. The tracks, the land under it, the right-of-way, they own. The crossings, when we have a crossing, it's basically the city asks to go over their tracks. They do all the construction, they make sure the crossings meet their specs. Any maintenance, anything that happens over the crossings, the city has to pay for. We found out yesterday at the commission, the train is coming through Vero Beach, the high-speed rail, at 110 miles an hour. That's fast, real fast. Folks are concerned, not only with the sound of the horn that's going to be on the high-speed rail, but also, now they're getting concerned with that train coming through that fast, how is it going to have impacts on their businesses, their residents, pedestrians, and all the above? Your High Speed Rail Commission is looking at all of the above that I just mentioned. I've been sending quite a bit of information to the committee members. I hope you all get it. And if you could, please, I know you're all very busy, just take some time and go through it, go through our minutes of our meetings. If you all have any questions or concerns, and if there's things that you need us to take a look at, please let us know. Now, we've been told a number of times that we are under some tight timeframes, and that was loud and clear in a memo that was sent to the city manager. The rail commission is aware of that. So, we're trying to get through all this. This morning, I was working on some more questions from Mr. O'Connor and Mr. Rusty Roberts that represents the railroad company. And so, that will be going to him this morning. You all will be getting a copy of that, and if you could, again, I know you're busy, take the time and take a look at that, because we're really drilling down to get some hard, hardcore answers. We heard about quiet zones today. One of my questions in the material that I'm sending, can we even have, have quiet zones here? You know, we want to know how, and, and with that being said, we want to know, when does the horn sound before it gets to a crossing? You know, this whole issue on quiet zones may not work here. We need, we need to find out. The quiet zones, it's not all quiet. What happens, it's like in Europe, the gates come down and the bells sound, and the lights go on and off to give warning. One of my questions is, okay, when the gates and bells sound, how many minutes before the train comes to the crossing, does that happen? Now, the bells sound, do they, they sound usually first, then the gates are coming down. Now, do the bells go off, and there's a few seconds before the gates come down? Again, this thing is moving so fast, this is things that people want to know. Right-of-way, for a lot of people out there, they need to know they're putting down a second track. Most likely, they'll lay it to the west side that will have impact. We have Pocahontas Park, we have the Heritage Center, and other buildings close to the tracks. They're getting concerns. So, my phone has been ringing, and people are saying, you know, we're a little bit worried about this. And going forward, you, the elected body, you are responsible for the health, safety, and general welfare of your citizenry out there, and it also includes the businesses. So, the commission is also, they're looking at the impact. So, there's a lot on our plate, and every member is bringing their concerns to the table, working very hard. Back to this company, the company that's putting the high-speed rail through is a private company. I've taken some time to do the research on the company, very strong, financially sound company. What I'm gathering so far, they've taken a number of years to do certain studies throughout the state to see if it would be workable and doable for them. A company this huge and this financially powerful, they just don't all of a sudden come to the table and say, "Hey, we're doing a train through the state of Florida." They spend quite a bit of time. So, it looks to me like it really is coming. There's other things that they're going to be doing with their second track, and a private company, they will tell us what they want us to know. Their financials, we're going to find out, how much information are we actually allowed legally to take a look at? We'll discover that at the next meeting, because that's also in my paperwork to our city manager and to Mr. Roberts. Now, Mr. Roberts has been very kind to attend our meetings and answer our questions. And he has, we've had some point-blank questions, and some of his answers have been a direct "no," and "no" means "no." Now, going forward, once we get, once the commission as a whole takes a look at what we're doing, we'll package our recommendations to you all and send them to you. Then it will be at your table for you to make the appropriate decisions as you see fit. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Dag, before you leave the podium, one comment and one issue. A day or two ago, in the Wall Street Journal, there's an article, which I've shared with the city clerk, on the marketing, and it, it does not talk about this particular link, but it validates links of this length and with this particular set of demographics. I would draw that to your attention. How accurate it is, I don't know, but Wall Street Journal is pretty authoritative. But the other thing that came up yesterday that I thought was extremely interesting as far as the safety issue is, Mr. Roberts, I watched you on television, and thank you for the job that all of you did. But he mentioned fencing. And one thing that concerns me, and you mentioned Pocahontas Park a minute ago and the train to the west side. I mean, we have an extensive expanse of railroad that parallels US-1, let alone Pocahontas Park, let alone if we're able to do something with a diesel plant in the years ahead and so on. And he mentioned that there would be fencing in some places, but he didn't know where they were. And I, I've got to tell you, I'm concerned about pedestrians, people getting out of the track and fencing, and it's just a concern that I'd like you to look into, if that's appropriate.
Yes, sir, we will. And with fencing, the calls have already, have come in. Folks want to know, especially here in the Vero Beach city, what type of fence? What's it going to look like? Is it going to look like stockade fencing, corrugated metal, chain link? The other thing, how high is it going to be? Remember, our train track bed is above the grade of our road. I think it's a six foot. So, people are concerned about, okay, you're just going to run this big metal fence through town, and that's back to getting straight answers. You know, if the rail company has, is required to put the fence in, well, what's it going to look like? That's what people want to know, they want to see it. And back just real quick here, on the quiet zones, people want to know, what are the gates going to look like? So, I'm drilling down on that, so they will bring back, okay, show us what a quiet zone looks like. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Mrs. Turner has questions. Go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Mr. Dag, do you know the status of the environmental impact report? Do they have all that done? I thought Mr. Hedy raised a valid point, that that certainly is an area that we may be able to, yeah, to raise our concerns and get some pressure.
Yes, ma'am, and you're mentioning that study, that's another thing that I'm asking for, is let's take a look at the study that's on their table right now. And to have the city at that table. When can we have input? When can we add to the study the concerns that you, the council members, will have? I want to see a copy of the study. They talked about it, where is it?
Thank you.
Mr. Dag, one other question, I'm sorry, a quick question. Is Ms. Delaney going to come to one of your future meetings? She knows a lot of stuff, and I'd like to hear what she had to say.
I'll let Ms. Vok answer that. City clerk?
Yes, she is scheduled to come to their next meeting.
Ms. Graves, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, no, no problem, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering if we should consider having our commission liaison with the city of Sebastian? We're all facing these issues, and we're pretty close together, so it might, and Mr. Roberts, I know, is going to their council as well. Maybe if there's joint pressure from both to say, "You need to provide these to us," and, and that he's giving straight answers, which I'm sure he is, but more forthcoming answers to both councils, it might help.
What would you have me to do?
Well, I don't know if we can liaison to their city council. Have they, has the city of Sebastian created a railroad commission? No, so we would need, so we would need to liaison with their council, maybe one of our commissions, if you're willing, could, we could liaison?
It would be at the council's pleasure, you would have to direct what you want us to do, or me to do.
Just to find out what, what Sebastian's planning, or if they're having the same concerns and getting the same answers, just.
I have no problem with that, but just keep going forward with what you're saying.
Mr. Mayor, I'd suggest that we would go ahead and send minutes of our commission meetings to Sebastian and say, if, yeah, if they have any questions, comments, anything they'd like to get more involved with, and to handle it in that way, and see, you know, how much interest.
I think we should try to work together if we can.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Kramer. You know, one of the things that I, that I noticed during that meeting is that there was a lack of numbers. I know we've, we suggested going to Sebastian, but, you know, probably somewhere up and down the coast, somebody has done these engineering studies. You know, maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea to kind of get in touch with some of these other cities and see what it's costing them. I can't imagine the difference would be too much from what we would have to do to what they would do. Maybe it'd be an opportunity to get some, some numbers as to what we're really talking about, instead of trying to guess.
Yeah, for instance, Melbourne and Fort Pierce and so on, is that something that staff could do, Jim, or not?
We can make those contacts based on the information we received from primarily Palm Beach County. No one has done any studies. Now, Winter Park has allocated $170,000, I believe was the number that I saw, toward engineering studies. They have 16 crossings in their city, but they're just doing an initial review of what it would take on the 16. We have not seen anything and found any information other than the Federal Railroad Administration on quiet zones, and it gives the decibels of the horns and some of the grade crossing changes that'll be made, but it doesn't really give any dollar amounts. The question was asked yesterday at the railroad commission, where did the $3 million come from? And it sort of evolved from information we received. We had been told that Highway 60 alone could cost up to $600,000 for the quiet zone because of the configuration and the number of lanes that are crossing the railroad there, as opposed to example of what was referred to as the flyover. I had never heard that before, but it's, you know, that could have different consequences. But since that time, I have read some documentation that with, trains with these speeds, many of the crossings, or some of the crossings, could already be quiet zone qualified because of the speed coming through urban areas. I, I'm really speaking out of school, because the only thing I'm doing is reading some documentation and what the Federal Railroad Administration says. So, we really don't have a handle on that. And Jay, coming back, trying to find a number. For example, Palm Beach County, they say it's going to take $114 million, and I forget how many crossings they had. In, in Winter Park, now, they're not talking about all aboard Florida, theirs is that Sun train that they have going. And so, it's a different concept, but it is still the quiet zone issues that they are talking about and trying, trying to work through. Indian River County, they have talked to the Regional Planning Council, and in, in discussions the mayor and I had with Peter O'Brien, I think would be the best way, in my opinion, to follow up, is this, as the Regional Planning Council, because it's going to affect all of the counties in that area, in that window, let's use them as our conduit to try to gain information. You have the population centers in Palm Beach County, but you also have the impacts of the trains flying through three other counties in that Regional Planning Council. Just as a suggestion, I, I think using the Regional Planning Council as a, as a process to accomplish the goal.
One other thing, too, I'm, tomorrow, I'm going to the Treasure Coast Council of Local Governments in Fort Pierce, and I think that might be a good forum. You, you served on it before, you would have a better opinion on it.
No, I served on the Treasure Coast Regional League of Cities that Ms. Graves is serving on, but that certainly is another venue that I think you have an opportunity to talk to.
They, they are working on each member passing resolutions similar to the one we passed to the state, saying, you know, "What are we going to do about this?"
Well, I'll certainly bring it up tomorrow, and there was, they missed the last meeting, so, but there hasn't been a meeting for a while, but I'll see what they have to say. I'll report back to you, Jim.
And, Ken, coming back to your request, I think what the council's asked, that we send the minutes of your railroad commission to the city of Sebastian, if you would like, as chairman, like to prepare a memo to go on top of those minutes, may be good and sort of an outreach from the person who is really representing the train commission in, in the city of Vero Beach.
Is that acceptable with you all? Okay, I will do that. And I'll leave you with this. What the railroad commission is working very hard on is to get these answers, so you all can make your decisions, whether we're going to move forward with quiet zones or not, because it's money. And where is the money going to come from? The rail company, they have timeframes. And the idea, if you folks elect to go with the quiet zones, you have all, we'll work out the details, you make your decisions from, from there. Because as this is rolling through, the engineering firm, whoever they may be, it has to be an engineering firm that the rail people will work with. And they, and they want to see where the money's coming from. And then, under the timeframe to do the construction. Now, if we put it off, and that's your prerogative, if you put off the quiet zones, if you look at the, I polled all the documentations of the agreements for each rail crossing, they, they differ a little bit of what, what goes on there. And later on down the road, if anything happens, the railroad people don't like cities coming in ripping up their pavement, and you will pay dearly through the nose, through the nose down the road. That's why they said a few meetings ago, when Mr. Roberts came in, "If you folks are interested in quiet zones, well, this is the time to get on board, and we'll work it into our construction." Now, now it's boiling down, and I call it the window of opportunity. My understanding, the window was up this high, and I think we're about here, and my little body is underneath that, I don't want them shutting that thing on me and squeezing me. So, anyway, thank you for your time, and thank you for your consideration.
All right, thanks. I think that was a useful topic. Are there other comments from the public? Well, seeing none, we'll close public comment, we'll move on to the adoption of the consent agenda. Is there any council members that would like to pull an item, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item D2.
All right, D2 Record Management Handbook is pulled. Are the rest of the items acceptable?
Move to adopt as amended.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Mrs. Turner, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This particular item is Records Management Handbook. And I'd asked Ms. Vock, when was the last time we were updating it, or what was the timing that brought this about?
Actually, it's been about 10 years that we first incorporated this handbook, so it was time to, to give an update to it.
And the significance of this is?
Because of the state statutes have changed with the copy and charge and what we can charge for the public records and the time that we put into it, it was time to update our management handbook.
For the public that doesn't particularly have a copy of this, it does include a fee schedule for public records. And this fee schedule, I understand, is from the state statute, Ms. Vock?
Yeah, the, the state allows us, if we have a, a large public records request, to charge for the time that it takes us to pull out the records, as well as charge for copying the records. We tend to judge how much we're going to charge if the, the record request is going to take over 15, 20 minutes, and then we bring that charge into, into being. But we always try to let the person that is asking for the request kind of know what it's going, what the charge is going to be, to make sure that they want us to continue with pulling the records for them.
Certainly, because I think administratively, I mean, for a one-sided copy, 15 cent per page, for a two-sided copy, 20 cent per page, that you're going to spend more time administering these charges than actually getting the, getting, retrieving the document for, for citizens. And I was also called, called to my attention that there was a certain limited exemption that applies to copies made for Teamsters members, that the fee would be waived for up to 10 copies for the Teamsters. Could you please tell me where this exclusion came from?
That actually was in the negotiations with the Teamsters, and it is in the contract. And it looked, I'm trying to think back. It seems like it was about 2008, 2009, when they discussed that and asked that it be put in their contract, and it was negotiated on. So we felt that we needed to put it into our records management plan.
I'm aware that we had this negotiated in our Teamsters contract. Thank you. Just wanted to bring those items to light for the public. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
What's your pleasure, Mrs. Turner?
Move for approval, submitted.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have, moving down, we are 4A. Would the city council like to work on this, or would you like to take a break? I'm open to suggestion.
Take a five-minute break?
We'll take a break to 10:50, then we'll re-adjourn then.
Thank you.